It's six thirty. I'll call the War County Commission to order. At this time, I'll turn it over to Mr. Thomas Smith for the indication.
Tonight, we're honored to help Pastor and also my friend and I, that most of you know, Dr. Dean Moore, thank you.
Father, we just come to you tonight just thanking you for your grace that you show us every day and your mercy. Well, let us always remember that who you are and what you brought us to this point to be. Lord, forgive us where we fail you, forgive us where we forget about your laws and your, your love and to try to show us every day. Father, we want to tell you again, we love you and thank you for loving us. But your mercy endures forever for our families and we just want to thank you for the safety that you've given us this past week. We forget sometimes where, where we really need to be. Thanking you for all that you do for us, thank you for our families, our friends, and our churches. We just ask your blessings on them in Jesus's name. Thank you.
Amen.
Thank you, Dean.
Well, I'll turn it over to Mr. Thomas Smith for the pledge of allegiance.
Tonight, we, I want to welcome Mr. Wayne Wolford to ladies and the pledge of allegiance. Wayne is a U.S. Army veteran. He, he wears a lot of hats around Warren County. He's on the senior citizens board. He is active in the museum uptown. And he's got a lot of irons in the fire and I appreciate Wayne. And one of the things that he just told me a little while ago that I did not know, and there's a lot I don't know, is that veterans, when you're pledging allegiance to the flag, a veteran may salute instead of placing their hand over the bar. But anyway, I'll turn it over to Wayne. Thank you.
I appreciate that. Yes, and that's what I'm going to do this evening. I'm going to salute, okay? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All now has the part called rope. Here.
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 Here. Here. Here. Here. Here.
Scott Kelly.
Here.
Ron Lee.
Here.
Gary Martin. Kitty Moffitt.
Here.
Emma Dudley.
Here.
Kate Jones. Gary Frager.
Here.
Chris Rippey.
Here.
Christie Ross.
Here.
Scott Ripley.
Here.
Bobby Savage.
Here.
Donna Kahn.
Here.
Philip Stout.
Here.
Cole Taylor.
Here. Here.
Twenty-two present tonight. We'll move on to the adoption of our docket tonight. Do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
And I need a second.
Second.
Got a second, Mr. Rubble. Now, Mr. Pratt.
I would like, on number ten, new business, I would like to change the Spencer Road to Spencer Lane.
All right, you put that in the form of a motion?
Yes, I do.
All right, I got a motion. I got a second by Mr. Hillis. All that in favor of a man in our docket to change from Spencer Road to Spencer Lane? Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Now, we're back on the regular, original docket. All those in favor of approving our docket for tonight, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously. We'll move, we've approved our docket now. And if anybody wants to make a public comment, you can see Mr. Hillis in center up. We will move on to the reading of the minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I have a motion. We accept them and, um, accept as in not read them in this tonight.
I have a motion, Mr. England. Accept the minutes and not read them. A second by Mr. Pratt. And correct the conditions to the minutes. Being none, all those in favor of approving our minutes, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, passes unanimously. We'll move on to our elected official department reports, Agriculture, Mr. Keith Knooks.
Good evening. You should have my report. I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Mr. Chairman, do you just say?
I got a motion by Mr. Pratt. A second by Mr. Stapp. Any questions for Mr. Knooks?
Mr. Chairman. I got something I'd like to say. I'd like to let everybody know how passionate Mr. Knooks is about his job. Uh, right now, there's cattle judging going on in the county with the younger kids, four H. And there was a few young men that wasn't going to be able to do the cattle judging because of the conflict of sports and the doubt that the four H lady was able to do it. And, uh, Mr. Knooks reached out to me and he said, "I'm willing to be willing to take the time out of my day to teach these boys because I want to be involved in it." And I just wanted to say thank you and I know the other parents thank you.
That's true.
He's just a good man.
Any more questions? All right, all those in favor of approving reports now.
Aye.
All opposed, thank you. We'll move on to the Airport, Mr. Knuck.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and on, uh, on this occasion, those same Patrick's Day, I say, "Here and go brah, Ireland forever." You have my report? Do you have any questions?
Motion to approve.
Got a motion, Mr. Bowles, uh, Mr. Rubble. Any questions for the Airport?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
You didn't get to have your breakfast Saturday, this Saturday, a past Saturday, but how about this coming Saturday, are you going to try it?
No, sir. They, they decided they couldn't get the word out to everybody in their competing airports. So it will be, uh, the third Saturday in April. It'll be the first one. And the third Saturday in May, again, uh, we're going to have Aviation Day, uh, with the Young Eagles flights for young, uh, students and, uh, some other activities. I don't know all of them quite today, but mark the third day in April.
Third Saturday.
Third Saturday in April for the first breakfast, third Saturday in May for the Aviation Day.
Great for seven thirty, continue.
Yes.
Also, uh, did you, are you going to have flights for adults as well as your adventure?
That, that is not decided yet. We, we got to sign up some, uh, pilots, enough pilots to do, do all of them. We had a really good turnout last year, so we're, we're thinking it'll be big again.
All right, any more questions? Being none, all those in favor of approving the Airport report, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously. Uh, thank you, Mr. Knuck. We'll move on to Coates, Mr. Cole Miller.
Ladies and gentlemen, airport, you got my report. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them at this time.
Got a motion, Mr. Savage. I hear a second. Got a second by Mr. Smith. Any questions for the Coates?
Do you know how many houses you got under construction right now, do you?
Uh, complete, like, under construction, I don't, I don't have a number on that right now. I know we, uh, did, I think, twelve, uh, new permits last month. I'll tell you, I mean, it's dramatically slowed down, new permits. Um, but with that being said, we're still doing the inspections for permits that were pulled even up to a year ago. So, um, maybe this time of the summer, things will slow down. Uh, I'm sure Emily's probably hoping that's the case. She issuing permits left and right. But, uh, yeah, I think, I, I don't have a number, but I can get it to you for sure.
All right, thank you.
Any more questions from Mr. Miller? Being none, all those in favor of approving the court, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously. Thank you. Uh, now, EMA, Mr. Mills.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening, everyone. You have my report. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Move to approve.
I got a motion by Mr. Pratt.
Second.
Second by Mr. Bell. Any questions for the, we may, or for Mr. Rubble?
Uh, Mr. Hillis, I know we had some inclement weather and I know you guys did some work. If you could elaborate on what, what you accomplished over the weekend. I know you had, uh, shelter open and we'd like to know the particulars.
We did open our very first county-operated shelter. We had thirty-seven people that came out for that. These were folks that, uh, saw it on Facebook and we got the word out as quick as we could thanks to the Sheriff's Department. They got quite a few followers on their, their Facebook page. They got out pretty quick. These are folks that were, had some questionable, uh, housing situations. So it's one, one, uh, couple are building a home and living in the camper on the property as they're doing the construction. They didn't feel safe. Several people with other compromised structures. I mean, we had the family with their two-month-old baby, elderly couples, just folks that wanted to get in and out of that. Also, that shelter has been established with the state. That was done on Saturday morning, just before daylight. So that, there's an interactive map that you can go to. It's tn.gov/safepplaces. Brings up a map of Tennessee with all the counties. And in the red dots inside the counties, you click on the red dot, it shows you exactly where the address of that particular shelter is. So anybody coming through town, maybe from out of town, they hear their phone goes off. Everybody's phone went off and there's tornadoes. Where do we go? That, that map's available to anyone. Uh, matter of fact, it will link to Google Maps if you have that on your phone or whatever. If you're driving down the road, it will just link right over and give you turn-by-turn directions. We, of course, want to expand that, but, uh, that was a pretty good little need. Of course, uh, my wife Lana helped me open that up and they had snacks and popcorn. Some of the kids are a little bit edgy and nervous because mom and dad pulled them up and took them to this place. So she was able to have a little bit of fun with them and make it real relaxing. And they were all very, very thankful, uh, that we were able to do that. So, uh, of course, we constant contact with Tima through this whole thing Saturday. They gave us the green light. I called to her. We were out dealing with some tree damage through the roadways. And she turned everybody loose. It all worked out really well. So that was a pretty good service that we've not been able to offer in the past, but we have that now. Of course, you know, if you're in Morrison driving all the way to the mall, it's going to be, so we hope, we're going to keep working to expand that. Hopefully, whenever that map comes up to folks, there's a lot of red dots in that Warren County area. We're going to focus, the storm season is just now kicking off and it's getting off to a bang, especially if you were in the, on the, the Cab County-Warned County line and then ride over into White County. It's pretty rough out there. But no injuries that I know of that was reported to us. But a minor damage, a lot of trees, a lot of power lines, but some, some heavy damage just over the line in White County down by, uh, yeah, down in there, uh, around the boat, a lot of boat docks destroying, those destroyed homes on the riverbank. It looks like it came right down through that valley right there. So that's what, uh, went on over the weekend.
Thank you. Mr. Stapp.
Mr. Hillis.
Yes.
Thank you for such a good report. I think that's one of the best ones I've heard of her. I didn't know that, I didn't know that you were doing this job. Are you doing this temporary or?
Uh, for now, it's when, when, uh, when Jim retired, the state, if we want to keep our grant funding, we cannot lose any lapse in coverage of that position for them. They have to have somebody to communicate specifically if there's, well, like what happened this weekend, storm issues or whatever. So he came in on Friday and retired and, well, by Friday afternoon, we had to blame somebody. So Terry just made me enter him. For now, we were kind of managing out of our office, a little bit helping Jim anyway. I know we've had some conversations about a generator for this building. So the whole building will be powered. Of course, the ones that's out here didn't power much of the building and it's down anyway. Uh, there was some other stuff going on, so that just kind of rolled me into that from the time being anyhow.
Thank you for the good report.
Thank you, Jason.
I just want to thank Lana and Jason for stepping up and actually opening that up. I think that's something the county needs to expand on and they've really done a great job, uh, to get put that together for us. Because we've got individuals now in the county that don't have family or somewhere and, and they, they need somewhere to go when these bad weather situations come in.
But that, we actually had four families there that just moved in here. Uh, they've been here less than six months and they had no idea. They actually saw it on the Sheriff's Department Facebook page and came straight there. There was some folks that were in town and didn't realize that the storms were that bad. Their phones started going off. They came straight there. So just a wide variety. We were from, I think our oldest person was sixty-six and like I said, we had a two-month-old there. So there's all a wide range of folks that, that, that came out and hung out for a couple hours.
Mr. Stapp.
Those, those cops that we've, uh, we're aware of these situations, they hadn't, they're not here yet, are they?
No, they're not here yet.
I mean, but that could be a, it'd be a.
It could. It could. If this had happened during the night. I mean, we're very lucky this time. It don't normally work out that way, but the sun was still shining when this thing really came through, which helped a lot. Because, I mean, what came in through the bulk and right in, right, right in behind the midway community over the tree lines, you could actually see. I've got some pictures of it because Tima wanted that as I went out towards the four lane, towards that way. So the sun, the daytime really helped people, you know.
But I mean, like, how long did some of those people stay?
Uh, it was about, about four hours.
Yes.
Yeah, about four hours.
If it had, uh, if it had gotten, was worse than what it was, they had to ask if they could stay the night. And we would have been there all night long if it were to need be to that situation.
Of course, Tima's the one that gave us the green light.
The green light to let him see him once, because I was out in the community and I don't, can't sit there and watch the radar while I drive.
And she had it on there, but they were keeping in constant contact. We were separate though. The problem with these storms is you know it's going to be bad weather. We hear about it two days before. It could be tornadoes, could be this, could be that. It's coming into the area and then all of a sudden on channel two or whatever, "Oh, we just had a new warning pop up. You're ten minutes from this particular street or this particular neighborhood. Get your safe shelter now." Well, that's, if you don't have a safe shelter, if you're living in a mobile home or this campers or things, if you know it's coming and there's a place you can go, like, it's the time, it's going to get in Warren County about an hour. So you know you've got an hour to get to the shelter. Just hang out, you know. There's, like I said, there was stuff for the kids on TV, the weather was on a different TV for the grownups, you know. Stuff just to make them comfortable and keep them at ease, uh, so they can get there beforehand, not after something's happening. All of a sudden, if their roof gets damaged and it's raining in, I don't know where to go. We're there for that too, but we're also there to get them out of harm's way ahead of this thing.
I, I know we had, second committee, uh, had numerous conversations with Jim about other shelters. Uh, and, you know, churches, we, we, we were trying to get a list of churches, like, uh, over at the Marsonary or, or I know, I think, even, uh, Commissioner England said his church and stuff. It, it, have you got anything going on with that yet as far as developing those more shelters? Because, I mean, obviously, you've proven at this point that they're a benefit to our county.
Yeah, and we've not done that just yet. I mean, that's really my goal this week, to at least find another one, hopefully in the Morrison area. That's a long ways between them all. In, in that particular, we just had to go one at a time the best we can. We did take everybody's name, checked in, we had a signing sheet, their contact information. If we have another storm come up, we'll know who they are. If they're not there, maybe we give them a phone call, "Hey, are y'all okay?" Uh, expand on that, but we have that on paper, trapped, so that when we show that to other places, that, you know, is, do we really need that or not? We've got something to put in their hand. This is how many people showed up when we built this thing together, basically forty-eight hours before the storms. We had this much turning. If that's a designated place all the time, it's on that map, from now on, unless we take it off the map, that's, the mall will be on that interactive statewide map. Uh, and most, there's a, there's a lot of counties, especially the, really rural counties, that don't have a red dot. But most every county our size has got at least one, if not more, and, and we didn't have one, but now we do. So when we just build up all that, uh, there's stuff, you know, there's a lot of things that we can qualify for, a lot of things we can do from a safety standpoint and being prepared for things. But we have to take certain steps that the state sees, "Hey, they're doing X, Y, and Z. Let's help them out with this." Uh, those are the things we've got to start doing as far as emergency management. We got to be doing our part. We can't just say, "Hey, the state needs to come do this for us." But we, we got to be doing it and it's their job to help us. And they'd be great, the conversations I've had with them. It's basically, what do you need, what do you need to know, what can we do to help you? Constant, I mean, they called all, started four o'clock in the morning, Saturday morning, when that first round came through. It wasn't really all that bad. I think we had a house fire out in Irving College area from a lightning strike, but the wind and the expected tornadoes stuff didn't really happen for us till that second round in that afternoon. I think it's been great to, whatever it is we need, but we got to do, it's, it's a joint thing. They're not going to come down here and hold our hand and do it for us. But, uh, they will guide us and tell us what we need to know, step, every step of the way.
All right. Uh, all those in favor of approving the court, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. I think that was a great test to see if we need to expand this shelter. If we do see there's a need out there on that, so we need to be working on that. Uh, EMS, rest again.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ladies and gentlemen, I'm sure if you have a copy of our report, we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Move to approve.
Moved and approved by Ron Lee and a second by Mr. Stapp. If there are any questions, Mr. Dig. Being none, all those in favor of approving the court, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, passes unanimously. Thank you, first. Uh, BSO, Mr. Mark Martin.
Ladies and gentlemen, you have my report. I want to just add one addition. Uh, Tennessee Department of Veteran Services has been looking at a new claims processing system, uh, since about twenty-twenty-two. They have started implementation of that. It'll be fully implemented probably in May of this year, uh, at no cost to county government. They're going, they're going to foot. Uh, at no cost to county government, they're gonna, they're gonna foot the bill for implementation and licensing for it. But it's a big improvement for how we process claims out of the county, if you guys to be aware of that. I'll look at you as we go forward with that. What's that?
Can I vote for Mr. Savage?
I'll say.
And second, Mr. Vale, any questions?
No questions, just a comment, um, he may not hear this, but I just wanna give a testament to what, what they do. We had a young lady, um, through some, I got a phone call last year, a young lady who didn't understand how to get benefit service. She thought she didn't have any, pretty young, and she come up here and talked to them, and she went through some mental health stuff too. And she's trying to help get her daughter back, moved, came back here and found out that she's gonna get back to eight, like, starting like eight years or something like that. So, without them doing that, she had no idea how to do this stuff. So, I was just, thank you guys for what, what you do, appreciate that.
Any more questions? Any none, all those in favor of approving the court, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passing the unanimous. Uh, now, Mr. Cotton, the finance, your report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, uh, ladies and gentlemen, of course, you have my report, any questions, I'm gonna ask you to stop.
What did you say?
Uh, Mr. Ruben, I got a motion, the second, Mr. Tyler, any questions about financials? Any none, all those in favor of approving the court, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passing the unanimous. We'll move on to committee reports, we'll start with, uh, budget finance.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, as you all know, it's getting close to the fun time again, so, uh, we've got two weeks until all the department budgets are submitted, that'll be March thirty-first, and that's all I've got right now. We'll begin with you pretty soon, thank you.
Uh, Billie Graff?
Uh, I don't think Billie Graff's gonna report tomorrow's, uh, the Health Department bids come in, uh, be at three o'clock in the conference room, if anybody wants to attend. So, I'll have to report.
Alright, uh, economic, I can call it.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, we have nothing else to report at this time.
Uh, education?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, um, our next education meeting is gonna be on March the twenty-fourth at four o'clock. And that's prior to the five o'clock school board meeting. There's been a, a lot of activity in education at the state and federal level. Um, there'll be some discussion going on, and so in our next meeting, we should be able to update you on some aspects of legislation that's totally affecting Warren County. Thank you.
Uh, financial management at this time has nothing to report, we'll move right on to health and welfare.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, as everybody probably knows, we did decide to extend our free adoptions, uh, through April the eighteenth. And, uh, hopefully that will help with some of our, uh, reduction in our, uh, population there at the shelter. And then, uh, we got good news concerning the vehicle, if you wanna expand on that, we do definitely appreciate that.
Yes, we're, uh, directing the maintenance vehicle to be used at the animal control facility. And we're looking at buying a box to put in the back, and that will come before financial management and budget finance, uh, with the money we appropriated to buy a vehicle. This is a twenty-two model Ford, Ford or, got somewhere around fifteen thousand miles on it. And they've been using it anyway, so that'll be our new vehicle for animal control. Uh, we'll move on to highway bridge.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I really don't know what's going on, uh, I don't have anything to report, thank you.
Alright, thank you. Policy personnel?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, we met on March the sixth, and we accepted, uh, reports from our Coast Department and the Judicial Commission, and other than that, we haven't reported.
Alright, thank you. Uh, we'll move on to safety. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, at this time, safety is necessary to report. Alright, county correctional partnership?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, today in, uh, jail, we got two hundred fifty-eight, uh, hundred ninety-four males, sixty-four females, and eleven is T L C males, and we don't have any, uh, T L C females, and that's all we've got at this time.
Alright, thank you. Uh, legislative?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, we have nothing to report at this time.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, Mr. Hillis, you have any public comment? No public comment. We'll move, we'll move right into new business, and the first item on the agenda is to, uh, to remove and close Spencer Lane on the roadless. Can I hear a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I like the motion to close Spencer Lane.
Alright, I've got a motion, give her a second.
Second.
You have a second, Mr. Ross? Any questions about, about closing Spencer Lane? Me?
What's the reason for closing?
Uh, Mr. Board is here, he owns both sides of the road down through there, and he's got, they, there's just people coming down through there. He, he's bought the property on both sides, and it's just a lane to what it is, so there's a lot of people coming down through there constantly.
Is that it?
So, all those in favor of, uh, closing Spencer Lane, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passing the unanimous. We'll move on to item number two. This is a resolution for us to, for me to be able to charge the renters at the mall for our new compactor at the mall, and we pay them the same rate as the city. But it gives me the authority to actually negotiate that with them and, and implement that, so we can. Got a motion, Mr. Hillis?
Second.
Second by Mr. Prager, any questions about the resolution? Any none, all this clerk, Carl Ruff?
Yes.
Carl Bowman?
Yes.
Rodney Brown?
Yes.
Charles Dotson?
Yes.
Randy Ewan?
Yes.
Steve Glenn?
Yes.
Stephen Elton?
Yes.
Brad Willis?
Yes.
James Hines?
Yes.
Scott Kelly?
Yes.
Rodney?
Yes.
King Hoffett?
Yes.
Tim Montgomery?
Yes.
Gary Prager?
Yes.
Chris P?
Yes.
Christie Ross?
Yes.
Scott Ruben?
Yes.
Tony Savage?
Yes.
Don Smith?
Yes.
Philip Stow?
Yes.
Cole Taylor?
Yes.
Lane Wilkerson?
Yes.
Anyone want to take a vote?
Item resolution number three passes twenty-two to zero. We will move on to item number three, is a, uh, this will be actually open to the public. If we have anybody qualifies for appointment for the fifth district, possible, that we have a reservation in that area. Is there any nominations for that? Being no one, not being nominated for that, we'll move on to item number four, the appointment and nominations for ninth district.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Uh, I'd like to nominate Mr. Mike Swims, he's actually in the audience back there in the corner.
Second in motion.
Alright, we got a motion by Mr. Hilton, and a second by Mr. Carleen Brown. Uh, Mr. Swim, you do have your credentials being able to serve in this capacity?
Yes, sir.
Alright, so, alright, we'll see y'all then.
I have one comment I need to make.
Yeah.
Uh, Mr. Ed Fomello called me today and wants it to be known that he is endorsing Mr. Swims, he could not be here tonight.
Okay. Right. Do, uh, I hear a motion, the nomination ceases in late vacillation.
It's a move.
Come up with Mr. Hilton, I hear a second. The second by Mr. Staff, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, congratulations, Mr. Chairman. We'll move on to item number five, and this is resolution four dash twenty, twenty-five, to create a jurism authority. I hope you've all had time to read over it, and I mentioned this at the last meeting, that we would be bringing this before y'all, and here it is. Do I hear a motion?
I have a motion.
We got a motion, Mr. Christie Ross.
Right.
And a second by Mr. Carl Bowman. Anyone have any questions about the board recruiting, the jurism authority?
Is, is this like another committee, or is it separate?
This, this will actually be a totally separate, we, we will actually appoint those people, that's the next thing, to the jurism authority. That'll be the next, we just, they went through the legislative, how they wanted to draw it up, and how they actually wanted to do their appointments. Any more questions? All this clerk, Carl Ruff, then.
Michael Bell?
Yes.
Carl Bowman?
Yes.
Rodney Brown?
Yes.
Charles Dotson?
Yes.
Randy Ewan?
Yes.
Steve Glenn?
Yes.
Stephen Elton?
Yes.
Brad Willis?
Yes.
James Hines?
Yes.
Scott Kelly?
Yes.
Ron Lee?
Yes. Yes.
Tim Montgomery?
Yes.
Gary Prager?
Yes.
Chris P?
Yes.
Christie Ross?
Yes.
Scott Ruben?
Yes.
Tony Savage?
Yes.
Don Smith?
Yes.
Philip Stow?
Yes.
Cole Taylor?
Yes.
Lane Wilkerson?
Yes.
Anyone want to take a vote?
Alright, resolution number four passes twenty-two to zero. And we will move on to item number six, which is jurism authority appointments. Uh, the legislative committee on this resolution set up, that the county executives shall appoint, and they shall be confirmed by the, uh, legislative body. So, you have a list of, uh, Mr. Christie Ross, Carleen Brown, Scott Ruben, Brad Willis, citizens, Sarah Cantrell. Tim Gressel is moved back here, but he is involved with the, uh, Cumberland Caverns is the reason he's on that. I tried to get, uh, somebody from our two biggest jurisdictions, which would be Cumberland Caverns. And Mr. Damon Brown is involved in Rockon State Park, and is actually, uh, over the, uh, Cardinal Mountain Declaration with the new Cardinal Mountain State Park. So, that's the reasoning for my, my appointments. So, I'll ask, uh.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion, Mr. Vale, second by Mr. Savage. All those are in favor of approving the appointments, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passing the unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, if I could point out to everyone in the rules and regulations to add that to, um, page nineteen of Board Port Forty-two, the existing rules.
Okay. Alright, that will go in your rules and regulations. Alright, we'll move on to the item number seven. Travel and contract services amendment. Mr. Cotton, I guess you need to point it.
Alright, uh, this is an amendment came out of Board of Education, and it's gone through by the National Management Department to transfer funds from regular instruction program textbooks bound into, uh, three different travel lines, as well as contractor services, uh, within the Board of Education.
Make a motion to approve.
Second, Mr. Staff. I hear a second. Got a second, Mr. Dotson, any questions about the budget amendment? Any none, I'll have clerk Carl Ruff.
Carl Bowman?
Yes.
Carl Bowman?
Yes.
Rodney Brown?
Yes.
Charles Dotson?
Yes.
Randy Ewan?
Yes.
Steve Glenn?
Yes.
Stephen Elton?
Yes.
Brad Willis?
Yes.
James Hines?
Yes.
Scott Kelly?
Yes.
Rodney Lee?
Yes.
King Hoffett?
Yes.
Tim Montgomery?
Yes.
Gary Prager?
Yes.
Chris P?
Yes.
Christie Ross?
Yes.
Scott Ruben?
Yes.
Tony Savage?
Yes.
Don Smith?
Yes.
Philip Stow?
Yes.
Cole Taylor?
Yes.
Lane Wilkerson?
Yes.
Anyone want to take a vote?
Item number seven passes twenty-two to zero, we'll move on to, uh, amendment number eight, Mr. Cotton.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, this is another, uh, state program for the Sheriff's Department, uh, the recruitment and retention program. These are funds allocated by the state of Tennessee to help, uh, sheriff departments retain and recruit, um, certified officers. Uh, we have received this money, and we need to appropriate these funds, so we pass this money on to those who want to.
We got a motion, Mr. Ewan?
Second.
Second by Mr. Hilton, any question about these funds? Any no questions, I'll ask clerk Carl Ruff.
Michael Bell?
Yes.
Carl Bowman?
Yes.
Rodney Brown?
Yes.
Charles Dotson?
Yes.
Randy Ewan?
Yes.
Steve Glenn?
Yes.
Stephen Elton?
Yes.
Brad Willis?
Yes.
James Hines?
Yes.
Scott Kelly?
Yes.
Rodney Lee?
Yes.
King Hoffett?
Yes.
Tim Montgomery?
Yes.
Gary Prager?
Yes.
Chris P?
Yes.
Christie Ross?
Yes.
Scott Ruben?
Yes.
Tony Savage?
Yes.
Don Smith?
Yes.
Philip Stow?
Yes.
Cole Taylor?
Yes.
Lane Wilkerson?
Yes.
Anyone want to take a vote?
Item number eight passes twenty-two to zero, we'll move on to item number nine, Mr. Cotton.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, uh, this is an amendment to, uh, charges for the general fund, to, uh, appropriate additional funds to cover, uh, what are projected to be an increased, uh, cost for building, contents insurance, liability insurance, work comp insurance, and trustees conditions.
Motion approved.
Motion, Mr. Ruben? We have a second, Mr. Savage, any questions about this amendment? Any none, I'll ask clerk Carl Ruff.
Michael Bell?
Yes.
Carl Bowman?
Yes.
Rodney Brown?
Yes.
Charles Dotson?
Yes.
Randy Ewan?
Yes.
Steve Glenn?
Yes.
Stephen Elton?
Yes.
Brad Willis?
Yes.
James Hines?
Yes.
Scott Kelly?
Yes.
Rodney Lee?
Yes.
King Hoffett?
Yes.
Tim Montgomery?
Yes.
Gary Prager?
Yes.
Chris P?
Yes.
Christie Ross?
Yes.
Scott Ruben?
Yes.